Okay, let me call to order the March 7, 2018 meeting, Committee of the Whole of Pottstown Council. I'll ask you to rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me start by saying thank you all for coming out tonight on this heavily blizzarded weather in March here in Pennsylvania. If many of you have not lived here for a while, this does happen every winter. We actually do get snow. And I'll start with the subcommittee reports. Infrastructure, Vice President Kulp.
Okay. Mr. Levin Dinsky did the notes for me, so they're much better than mine.
Okay.
Keith reported on the strategies for getting landlords to get current on their taxes by putting place cards on the properties, and this forces the tenants to complain about the problem until the owner rectifies the problem. He also sees some new business and zoning applications as well. That was licensing and inspection. Public Works, Doug updated on the light pole project and helped Donald to understand what it involved, then reviewed the process of the road work going on, as well as all of the sewer problems we had due to the cold weather in February. Also mentioned progress on other projects, including the updates on pedestrian poles for street crossing and rail milling for the sensors for cars at intersections. Parks and Rec, Mike reviewed Phase 3 for Memorial Park, the playgrounds upgraded by the Spray Park, Cedarville's proposal for the park. We also talked about documentation, retention gap when receiving turnover packages from contracting companies. We reviewed the Disney project and its progress. Pollock Park is also waiting on contract response, plus EPA remediation plan for it since it's targeted as a brown field to play field once the park is cleaned up. Also waiting on grants, the stabilization of the riverbanks with help from the Schuylkill River Restoration Fund. And that will be it for that.
Very good. Item B, Peggy Clark will be here Monday to give the report. Seized Transportation, Vice President Kulp.
There was no meeting.
No meeting. All of it, boys and girls, Counselor Kirkland.
Yes, I'm just gonna read the entire statement. It's not much. This month, we have seen growth in membership, as well as daily attendance. We have added 15 members this month and have had an average daily attendance of 45 or more students. We have seen an increase in teen memberships, with them being the majority of our new members this month. On any given day, there is almost an even number of teens and younger adults. Programming have picked up with the addition of a martial arts class twice a week, offered to members at no charge here at the club. Other programs such as soccer and Girl Scouts continue to go well and gain participation. There have been no major issues so far as the building goes. The move of the weight room to the second floor has been completed, and the room on the first floor where the weight room was is currently being redone to be a new game room. That's that report.
Very good. He is Pottstown School Board. Anyone here? Okay. F Library, Mr. Green. Also not here. Ad Hoc Zoning, Counselor Prosser. No meeting this. Animal Committee, Counselor Kirkland.
Yes. There's a little bit of a concern that pit bulls are coming through the kennel at a higher rate than any of the other breeds, and also they're not being picked up by their owners, so we're going to be looking into that. Journal maintenance is constantly being done, laundry, cleanup, et cetera. If anyone's interested, there is a Humane Lobby Day, April 16, in Harrisburg, hosted by the Humane Society of the United States, where you learn how to advocate for the passing of state humane laws. And also, do we know if the township participation bill has been sent out yet for 2018?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Township participation bills, have they been sent out yet? Yes, great. Thank you very much. That's the report.
Okay. Thank you. Safety, Chief Drumheller.
We had a very great meeting, a reorganization meeting, and the only other thing that I have for your packet is civil service met, and you have the information from that. So, Andy.
Emergency Services.
Good evening, Council. I don't have my written-out report because I was anticipating a meeting being canceled. Mother Nature changed that. Just a couple of highlights. Training, again, always racking up some good man-hours. I don't have the numbers again in front of me because my report's on my laptop. Couple of things that are going on, the mixer at 107 a couple of weeks ago was good. I think it would have been, could have been a lot better, a lot better attended. Thank you, Counselor Kirkland, for being there, it was much appreciated, and your support. We also have another couple events coming up. Hopefully, we can get some active people out there that like to run. We have a 5K coming up in... Excuse me. Oh, there it is. 5K Run coming up Saturday, June 2. It's on our website. It's a family event. We're gonna have some family things going on there. There'll be a free one-mile walk-run thing for kids, so come on out. We're gonna, we'll have hot dogs, things of that nature there. It's, I think it's $25 to get in, and it's right along this trail. We'll be setting up down here where the park is, down at Riverfront. Our annual fundraiser for our Beef and Beer For Incentive Program is coming up on April 28. We will have that held over at Norco Fire Company because of size. Tickets are $25, and it's a great time, lots of food, DJ. If anybody is interested, please contact me or contact the station. And I don't believe I have anything else other than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Councilors. I would like to point out a couple of things here. Over the weekend, we did have a power outage that affected a mid-rise apartment building. The power surge destroyed their equipment in the basement. They had to replace it. As a result, myself and Captain Thomas from the Police Department came in. We had to establish a shelter to house the residents, and I'd like to extend gratitude to Scott Cosworth and the Pottstown YMCA for stepping up and allowing us to use their facility as a shelter. Also, I did have a career firefighter retire this month. I'd like to thank the mayor for coming out and attending his retirement party, where she did present him with a proclamation. That was much appreciated. And I'm gonna try and keep this short, and I'll let you know that our call volume so far for the year, we're up 34 percent. We're running 34 percent more calls than we did last year. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, it's Human Relations. Is Levin good?
Good evening, Councilors. The Human Relations Commission's February meeting was not held due to, we did not have a quorum. And the Commission's March scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 13, in council chambers at 6 o'clock PM. At that time, the Commission anticipates approving an individual to recommend to council to fill the vacant position, and the Commission also continues working on the Community Day to be held on Sunday, June 10, in 2018.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Financial Sustainability Oversight Committee, Counselor Kirkland.
I don't want to say, we do have meetings this month, later on this month.
Nineteenth.
And a lot of the ideas that came up in previous meetings, we weren't able to implement because of time. Because the budget was coming up, and we had to deal with that. There was a lot of really good ideas that came forth, a lot of good suggestions that came out of that meeting, and we're gonna be pursuing those in upcoming months. We're very confident that we'll be able to come up with some really good, strong ideas to be able to manage the budget and to help us in the future. So, I'm very confident with that, and, you know, looking forward to it.
Very good.
What, the 19th? Next meeting?
If I remember right, it's the 19th.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
This month.
March.
March. Four.
It's the 19th of four.
Four.
19th of four. Okay. Mayor Henry, your report.
I do. Despite the short month, we sure packed a lot in. I met with the local 743 IBW to discuss their apprenticeship programs and ways to engage our youth in our schools. I met with the co-chairs of Go Fourth on some new ideas for the 4th of July festivities. We also had our Pension Board meetings for the uniform and non-uniform staff. We had our Area 1 DNC meeting for a meet and greet with candidates and petition signing. I also met with investors to discuss opportunities in the borough. As Chief said, I intended a very awesome retirement party for Mike Sudlock Jr. from the North End Fire Company. Went to Padita Meeting, and I will be working on a discovery map for Pottstown on our marketing campaign. I attended the American Association of University Women's Monthly Meeting, two days of municipal training. I also met with the Phoenixville Mayor. We are collaborating on revitalization efforts in the borough, and I was interviewed by one of our 4th grade Girl Scout troops as part of their inside government badge. And on Saturday, March 10, is the Rotary Annual Pancake Breakfast at Brookside Country Club from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Ticket information is on my Facebook page, and I will be serving you breakfast and coffee. That's it.
You've been busy.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Managers, your report.
All right, well, as Chief LaSar had mentioned, we did weather the storm okay on Friday, although that one did hit us pretty hard, and so, big shout-out to the police and the fire company for getting those individuals to set up with a shelter, and also just keeping the streets clear and free from debris, so, really, really appreciate that. We did have random power outages here at Borough Hall and Wastewater Treatment Plant, but we were able to get everything back up and running due to the commitment and hard work of our staff that we have here. Just another note on lighting and power and PICO. As many of you know, we've been struggling with the lighting situation on the 200, 300, 400, and so on blocks of High Street. It's really starting to become a problem for us. We have taken it to PICO. It's something that we take very seriously, the safety that the lighting provides in that area. And right now, we are in discussions to have them actually replace the entire underground wires that feed the streetlights along High Street. What happens is they come out and they replace a certain section, and then the next section blows out. The problem with that line is that it's been in the ground, it's so old, that the whole thing just needs to be replaced one time. The bad news is, this has to be designed, and it's gonna take six months or more before they can actually put the shovels in the ground. So, in the interim, we're gonna be working with them to string up aerial wires between the streetlights to at least provide some lighting and add some, make it more of a safe environment in that area. It's not gonna look that nice, but we think that as long as it's only temporary, we're gonna, we're gonna do that and allow them to do that for the benefit of the safety of our residents. Couple housekeeping notes. Blighted was moved to every other month. The next meeting is April 18. The zoning hearing board is now the fourth Wednesday of the month. And a quick update on Memorial Park. As you've seen, we've been constructing a nature-based playground down there. We expect to have that completed in May or June. We've also executed a contract with the Borough Engineer to provide the construction documentation for Phase 3 of Memorial Park, which includes playground and picnic facilities and walkway and parking in the area around the Spray Park. So, that is underway as well, so look for more updates on that to come. We're still working on Pollock Park. We've entered application for a targeted brownfield assessment grant, which will help us to determine exactly the steps that need to be taken there to remediate that property. And we've also, on the grant front, we've submitted a Montgomery County 2040 grant for walk-bike, and a grant for the Fine Screen project down at the Wastewater Treatment Plant. If you haven't heard or if you aren't aware, one of the issues that we're encountering more frequently at the wastewater plant is these supposedly flushable wipes that people are putting into our collection system. Well, it's now become such a problem that it's not only clogging up, you know, individual homeowners' pipes and mains and everything else, it's now getting down to the wastewater plant and starting to jam things up there as well. So, please just ask that you, you know, not flush those types of materials. You know, this is about a $500,000 project that we're gonna have to undertake just to combat this issue. That's all that I have for now.
Okay. I thank you. We have a presentation, the Pottstown Community Action Block Cleanup Event. Welcome.
Hello. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Charlotte Charles, and this is Tamara Charles, and we're part of the new community group in Pottstown called the Pottstown Community Action. And I'm gonna read our mission statement, and then Tamara's gonna talk more about our group here. Our first goal is to put the word neighbor back in the hood. Therefore, we recognize this takes courage. We all share the hope that our group can spread this inspiration, therefore bringing about the cure to the things that need to be done in the community. We commune in order to bring about unity, and by doing so, our group has become a community in and of itself. We are the nucleus, that hidden seed in the pod, that we hope would find fertile soil in the hearts of our neighbors. Our ultimate goal is to become a beacon, a ray of hope, that we can be seen as those who show the way.
We came up with some core values, peace, unity, inclusiveness, and community. We were started by Habitat for Humanity of Montpel and Delaware Counties. They've been hosting monthly meetings, and they've given us a small budget and mentorship along with other nonprofits that have been attending our monthly meetings, including Genesis, Mosaic, and Pottstown Community Arts, and our own mayor. We're not limiting ourselves because we have a lot of ideas, but this past year, we've done two block cleanups. We renewed 40 bulk trash items from alleys and people's yards. We've given out 13 bulk trash stickers, and in return, we just asked for a $5 donation to our group. We plan on being consistent. We plan on being consistent, increase our community outreach, and as our group grows in numbers, we can tackle other issues with the ideas that we've come up with to improve the appearance of our neighborhoods. Coming up, we have the Rock the Block on April 21, and we've submitted an application to close down a block during that event. Habitat is providing a dumpster during that event for area residents to put all their bulk trash items during our cleanup. And we're having trouble finding an affordable solution. We wanna collect electronics also, along with the bulk trash, so if anyone on the council has any ideas that help us make that happen in an affordable way with Habitat. Also, on that day, we're gonna kick off our anti-litter campaign. The sign that says Keep the Trash Out, that will be our yard sign that we're gonna hand out that day. We also have window decals that we're gonna pass out. This anti-litter campaign, along with being consistent in our block cleanups, we also wanna try to educate and promote changing the habits that are contributing to all the trash laying around the neighborhood. So, we're gonna keep that going on for a long time. Also, we want to keep on engaging the residents and improve participation of the residents, homeowners, renters, and everyone that's a stakeholder in Pottstown. Our members are gonna show up to all the events that are being held by other nonprofits in the hope that they'll come to our events and support us and get on board with what we're trying to do. The reason that we are different from all the other groups in Pottstown, there is a lot of nonprofits. We are just a group of volunteers. We live here, and we want to improve the appearance and the quality of our own neighborhoods, and we wanna get everyone involved. We're finding that a lot of residents, they really wanna clean up the neighborhoods, but they just don't know how, they're not organized, but we have Habitat for Humanity behind us, and they've given us a small budget, and I think we can really accomplish a lot. We're gonna keep on engaging and grow our numbers, and we're gonna be here for a long time. In the future, we're gonna get new members, we're gonna promote civic engagement, we'll address reducing crime and safety of our neighborhoods. Any questions for us?
I spoke with our LNI Director specifically about this, and it's one of, especially in the first ward, it's one of the most frustrating things that I contend with. And I think it's something that can be solved. It's unlike some other difficulties quite easily. I mean, everybody could pick outside of their house. I mean, I've had excuses where they can't afford, you know, trash bags, which is unfortunate, but I think if you could afford to produce the trash, you could have something to clean it up. And I guess the best thing that I thought of is, I could think of at least a dozen properties, specifically that kind of per block that really make, or individual block that produce most of the trash. And I just need some feedback from, you know, either folks like you in the first ward, where is it, yeah, specifically originating from, and then I could have our guys go out there and give them proper notices. And then for electronics, we discussed, I guess there are some, Montgomery County does have electronic pickups. I think it's a $10 per vehicle. I thought maybe I just load a truck with an eight-foot bed, I could just technically put it to work, but it's really tube TVs that are the biggest issue, and they're not accepted, unfortunately. They're like $65 per vehicle, so, to work on that.
Also, we reached out to a lot of residents, anybody that would like to organize a cleanup on their block, we'd like to provide all the supplies and come help them make that happen, so.
Are you, are you by any chance putting leaflets out to the residents to let them be aware of it? I mean, how are you getting it through?
Yes, we've been sending out a lot of flyers, between Beech, Walnut, Chestnut, Franklin, and Evans.
Well, if nothing else, thank you. Okay, next would be item seven. That has been canceled for this evening. It is a presentation Hancock Building Associates.
Good evening. We appreciate you getting us on the agenda. My name is Ken McCarty, I'm a lawyer in Pottstown. Next to me is Mike McAveney. He is High Street Dental. Neither of us appear here very often, but we both do a lot of time. I'm proud to say that my law firm celebrates 50 years at 1129 High Street, and, but, to the matter at hand, Mike owns a dental business. He owns a 300-block High Street Dental. He had an opportunity to expand his business and has acquired property on North Charlotte Street, the 600-block, 625, the Hancock Building. And he wants to, there is an existing sign of that property, and he wanted to replace that with a partially fixed sign and a partially electronic sign. Apparently, that application made its way to your board at the February meeting, and you authorized your solicitor to write a letter to the zoning hearing board in opposition, principally because that district is the TTN district, where electronic signs are not allowed. The hearing was scheduled, I got the letter about a week or 10 days or something like that, before the zoning hearing, and after consulting with my client, Mike, we decided that we'd come before the board and see if we could persuade you to reconsider your decision and perhaps retract your letter. What I have here is a limited number, but the office is closed today, and it's not...
We apologize because our sign, person was supposed to be here from North Jersey on the weather, and just wanted to get down there and apologize. Get all the flash drive, all the fancy stuff.
Because there's multiple things in this picture, I'd like to kinda walk you through it. So, on that picture, I didn't keep myself a copy, but in this vicinity there, you'll see the brown Hancock, if you can spare it.
We'll share.
You guys have my share. Right here, you'll see a picture, a small depiction of what the existing sign looks like. Just to the left of that is a depiction of what the proposed sign will look like. Okay, so it's essentially the same size, shape, configuration, and on the new sign here, the bottom portion will be fixed, it'll essentially probably have the address and just the names of the dentists. This is a commercial building that has three dental practices in it, and also two residential units on the top. So, Mike, in that building, they offer a number of different services, three different dental services. From time to time, they might wanna advertise availability of an apartment upstairs. They also do community events. They're willing to post public service announcements, Amber Alerts, things like that. And just having this fixed sign that can't be changed results in them from time to time putting banner signs out or hanging banners off the building. And I think the reason we're here is because the ability to change this relatively small portion of the sign, it's three feet by six feet, would give them an opportunity to make known to the traveling public there, people in that neighborhood, what other services they provide. So, you have, your ordinance provides a lot of criteria for electronic signs. And the reason electronic signs are not permitted in some areas are primarily for reasons of driver distraction. So, our representation to the zoning hearing board will be, it's the same as it is to you this evening, that this sign is not going to be a flashing, pulsating, or anything like that. It'd essentially be static. Your ordinance allows the sign to change every 30 seconds. We're gonna agree that it won't change more than once every five minutes. I would certainly let, you know, a car go in either direction, you know, ample time without seeing a change. But what Mike would like to be able to announce to the public changes, for example, what's on the sign now, as you can see in the large picture, and then in the upper right corner, our... are several other variations of things Mike would like to be able to announce, you know, on this sign without having to put up a new sign every single time. It would have day and date, amber alerts, public service announcements. It would indicate in the upper far right corner that they, you know, they do emergencies on the same day very frequently. And above all, I think Mike's, one of his driving reasons is he is a son of autism. There are very few dentists, I think he'll say, none in private practice that see children like that. And so Mike makes it part of his practice to do that at no cost, and he will from time to time put that on the sign. He's tried marketing that service he provides, but it's expensive to do so. Putting an ad is very expensive. He's found his website isn't, you know, that compelling or doesn't attract a lot. But when he's had a banner out or anticipates being able to put a message out like this that, you know, to be able to attract business for him, but also provide services to certainly the underserved population. There is community health and dental, I guess, and they do that service, but among the private practitioners, Mike is unique in that regard. So it will be, again, you have a long list of other things, the background colors, how frequent a change, can't pulsate, we comply with all those criteria. And the last thing I would mention is that in the TTN district, this would not be the first of its kind. St. Al's Church is in the TTN district, they have essentially the same kind of sign. I like to say that Mike's will be a little classier than this from what you, the depictions that are here. Not too crazy about the vibrant yellow, orange, and red, you know, fiber method and the amber alert, but your ordinance requires that people with electronic message signs have to register the county or the state to put the amber alerts up. I don't know if they look like this or not, but whatever they're told to look like is what he will comply with. So it is in large part a, you know, no mistake, it'll hopefully have some commercial advantage for Mike, but it will also have some public service value. Because it'll be static, it will not have any adverse effect, I don't think, on the community or the driving public, and we therefore ask that you reconsider. We will still go to the zoning hearing board, but I think most of you know that we have a slightly steeper climb if borough council expressed an opposition. So at minimum, we just prefer you be neutral. We wouldn't go so far as to ask you to support us, but just please don't oppose it. Mike, anything else?
I think Mr. McCarty very much summed it up. We just, there are five or six of us in that building, and we do a lot of good things in that building, and people just don't know that we do this. And we do, we give out toothbrushes, we give out toothpaste during Thanksgiving time. And like I said, it's very difficult to be able to advertise these services on regular newspaper, and this thing is really nice if we have done it without any hassle. The main thing is, my son, out of something autistic, and my heart really goes to these people every two or three months, try to get dentists together to come in and provide pretty much free and sharp services for these people. And it's a good way for us to advertise that on the billboard, too, because a lot of traffic goes by and they see this.
The main focus of the opposition came from the board councillor. He was the one contacted by local residents more than any of us. It's residential, they're opposed to this. The concern for drivers, especially driving southbound over Charlotte, the sign would be directly in their line of sight. But I'll have it listed for Monday evening, and we'll review it.
And also councillor Arms, who is councillor for the board, was not able to make it here tonight, but he did ask that I relay his comments to the applicants and the rest of the council. So I'm quoting him here. Residents in the neighborhood that I spoke to strongly objected to the idea of digital sign, the traditional tell neighborhood, as it detracts from the neighborhood aesthetic, which in my opinion is why the ordinance is ready to prohibit such signage in the TTN.
He's not here to rebut, but I'd just like to say two things. One, in the TTN, you do have other electronic signs. And secondly, the night that this was scheduled, our request for continuance to give us the opportunity to come here tonight was so short that the hearing board, Matt sat where you are right now, and I appeared, and there was one resident, and I spoke to that gentleman, I didn't have his name, I'm sorry, I've forgotten. He was only concerned about the flashing, you know, the distraction, his daughter, and I think they used that alleyway. And when I explained to him that there won't be any frequency again, changing, pulsating, it's essentially static, it changes instantly, and it won't change but every five minutes, he seemed quite satisfied with that. So I don't know if there's a huge outcry, you know, in that neighborhood, Mike, that's what Mr. Rock says, that's what he says. But at the hearing that night, there was only one person, and we'll find out, I think it's March 28th is the real estate, but I think the way it's designed, the colors, the frequency, the limitations, it has built-in dimmers for illumination. It's going to look very substantially like what's there presently, just give the ability for this businessman and someone who does some volunteer charity work, the ability to get the message out. Thank you very much for your consideration for the board here.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, number nine would have been a presentation they cannot show this evening. Ten is the Hill School Dining Room Land Development Plan.
Does it want to address council at all or not?
If they have any questions, I'll certainly make any question.
Yeah, we have the documentation.
You do have the documentation?
In our packet.
Yeah, just so council's aware, this has gone to the planning commission. The planning commission has recommended final approval of this plan. This is essentially a small building addition to their existing dining hall, I believe. Originally, when the plan was submitted, it was a significantly larger project. It has been scaled back significantly, so I think there's a few additions to the existing building. If I'm inaccurate, please correct me.
There's two small additions, one that just dropped, and one's an elevator stair tower, about 1,100 square feet added to the building. But mostly, it's interior renovation, upgraded the MEP systems, mechanical electric plumbing systems, all new kitchen equipment, and then bring in the ADA compliance, I guess we'd go on.
Originally, it was a larger building. I think they were going to do some driveway changes and access points. It's been scaled back significantly. Nonetheless, it still qualifies as a land development due to the nature of the improvements. The planning commission reviewed it, and I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but they recommended approval, and I think there was a number of waivers that were requested and all of them recommended. Again, most of the waivers had to do with the fact that this is pretty much a small project, and the Hill School's a large campus, and you don't need to show a lot of existing features within so many feet of a building that's on 113 acres or whatever. So to my recollection, there were no issues from the planning commission. They recommended the waivers, and they recommended approval of the plan. If there's any questions, the council will be happy to answer them. Dan, can you think of anything else?
No, you hit it all. It went through planning successfully, and they are recommending that council agree.
So if there's no objection, it would be listed then for Monday night. There would be two motions. One would be a motion to approve the land development plan. Obviously, they'd have to comply with the Cedarville letter. I think you have that information. That was a January 3rd letter. I think there was just some technical requirements yet they had to comply with. And then the second motion would be to approve the waivers that they have requested. I also believe that their engineer had submitted a waiver request letter. According to my notes, it's a December 4th, 2017 letter, and I believe there were eight waivers that they were requesting, and the planning commission, I believe, recommended them all.
So that'll be listed for Monday. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Number 11, Orbit Property. They will not be here this evening. Twelve is 505 Lincoln Avenue. Anyone here to present on that? If not, go ahead.
Okay, this is, I'm not sure council has seen this before. This is a townhouse, one single townhouse divided into six units. It's basically on, I believe it's running on Lincoln Avenue. The address right now is Lincoln Avenue, the front of those townhouses, they're actually front on Washington Street. You should have information in your packet from our consulting engineer. This plan actually had been before the planning commission a number of times. Planning commission had recommended that it go back and consider improved landscaping and some other things that they didn't feel were appropriate with the plan. At the last meeting, I believe the planning commission was generally satisfied with the attempt the applicant made to provide better landscaping for the property. I believe they've also adjusted the size of the units to make them somewhat smaller, decrease the depth, and widen them. So that they would be a little more consistent with the neighborhood. Planning commission recommended, and the applicant agreed, to contribute a fee in lieu of 10 trees, that's $350 per tree. There are not a lot of usable land on the site where you could actually plant trees, so the applicant agreed to contribute the money so that the borough could use that to plant trees and wherever they wanted to do that. I don't know if council recalls, but actually, this project did receive a conditional use from borough council, I believe, for the nature of the project, for the townhouse-type units that were required under our ordinance. So basically, the planning commission recommended approval, and the only thing that I know that is outstanding is that borough council would need to make sure that they are satisfied with the architectural elevations of the unit so they blend in with the neighborhood.
So we can ask them to bring them along, right?
Well, either that, or they will need to provide them before they pull any building permits. They'll have to get everyone's approval before they do that. So I think from my recollection, Dan, the planning commission made the recommendation subject to those issues, compliant with the engineering letter, the fee in lieu of, obviously, they're going to have to do a full-blown land development agreement because they're going to be building improvements on the site, and other than you have to approve the building facades. I'm not sure there's anything else for you guys to discuss. So that's ready for Monday, if you guys are ready for it.
If there are no questions, we'll have this listed. Very good. Thirteen, a resolution, dot grants authorization.
Okay, I can take this one. So basically, this is a procedural change to allow the interim borough manager, myself, to assign roles in the state-required online grant administration system. So previously, Mark had assigned those roles, now that would transfer to me.
Okay, so we'll list that for Monday. Fourteen is a resolution for Destruction of Records 2018, this we do every year.
Right, so this is, just to refresh your memory, in accordance with Act 428, each disposition must be approved by resolution. The list is attached to your agenda.
So we'll have that for Monday. Fifteen, Memorial Day Parade, May 28th.
Okay, looks like this is a parade permit for Memorial Day Parade on the 28th from approximately 8:30 to 10:15. The location would run from Goodwill Ambulance Station, that's their assembly location, and then take High Street down to Manatoni Street to Memorial Park.
Same as every year.
Same as every year.
Okay. We'll list that for Monday. Sixteen, the All-American Soapbox Derby. Anyone here to present or, okay, and they're just asking for closing Wilson?
For, yeah, they're asking for approval to close Wilson Street between Farmington Avenue and North State Street for the event on 615 and 616. They do have a rain date of 617.
Objections, we'll list that for Monday. Seventeen is nostalgia night, the car shows 2018.
Okay, so these are the car shows, tentatively scheduled for 55, 62, 77, 84, and 91. So five car shows from 4:30 to 9:00 p.m. on those dates. The difference in this application from last year is that they are now proposing rain dates on the following Sunday.
Sunday.
So that is something to note. It's also, I've asked police corporal to look into making sure that that wouldn't conflict with any of the other events that might already be scheduled for Sunday. And certainly, as new events come in, and they would like to use that area for a Sunday, we'll need to make them aware of the rain dates for the car show as well.
All right. We'll list that for Monday. Eighteen, Pottstown Rumble Beer Tent.
Okay, so this is pretty much the same every year by borough ordinance. If you want to serve alcohol in a park, you need to get council approval. So this is them coming to request the approval. The only change really is they're changing the closing time, proposing changing it from 10:00 p.m. to midnight, to more closely align with the events that they have going on there.
Okay, we'll list that for Monday. Nineteen, possible board appointments. A is a civil service commission, one vacant term to expire, 7/22/2023. There is a human relations commission, one vacant term to expire, 10/11/2020. C is the Pottstown Downtown Improvement District Authority, two five-year terms. D, land bank board. Now, will we be soliciting for that?
Yeah, so we'll be putting out requests for people to apply to our land bank board. If you recall, borough council passed an ordinance back in the fall to create the land bank. The second step of that process is to install a board. And the manner in which this board is appointed is a little bit different than some of the other borough committees, whose members are appointed by the council president. In this case, the land bank board members have to be ratified separately by a majority vote of council. So everyone will vote on who gets selected to that board.
Okay. And if there are any names for any of these vacancies, they will appear on Monday?
Correct.
Okay. Twenty, comments from citizens present. I don't know if anyone signed.
No comments from citizens present.
None. Okay, councillors' general discussion. Mr. Kirkland. Okay. Ms. Payans?
Couldn't hear. The speed limit on the Kyma Street, all the way down to Manatoni Park, Manatoni, the speed supposed to be 25, 30, and now the people go 60 and flying over there. No, 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 Kyma Street, South Kyma, all the way to the... Indu, whatever, yeah. They go too fast.
Hey, Mr. Prosser.
I think I say this every snowstorm, but when weather situations happen like this, I love living in Pottstown because I got everything I need within walking distance to go anywhere.
Ms. Cole?
Yes, I went to the play at Pottstown Senior High School, The Little Mermaid, and I would like to, I'd like to say to the performers, directors, orchestra, producers, teachers, and all who were involved in the making of The Little Mermaid, very well performed. These kids are amazing. I don't understand how they can get up on stage and do what they do. There were something like 100 kids.
Over 100.
In this play, and it was very, very good. If people say they have nothing to do, and oh my gosh, I'm going to sit in front of the TV, go out and support these kids at these schools for their plays, their musicals, and not just Pottstown, Potts Grove, Daniel Boone, Owen Jay, Borger Town, all of them. All these kids need to be supported, and everyone needs to know about all the really, really good kids that are in these schools that are really making an effort. And I also would like to say, I was up in, up at... And I also would like to say, I was up in, up at Sands Casino at the Stacks. And they had a kids program for the Lehigh Valley and North Hampton County for what's cool about, what's so cool about manufacturing. And it's, they get all the kids, all the schools, the middle schools involved, and the children go out and they make videos. They go, they get, they go to different manufacturers and they do videos on manufacturing. And the thing of it is, there's a lot of people, I mean, if you sit and think about it, everything you touch is manufactured. And we don't really realize this because we sit on our computers, but everything is manufactured. And there were all these businesses that were involved in this. There were 900 people at this, what's so cool about manufacturing. There were, Governor Wolf had a video there. The president CEO by the name of Jack Flunder, he's the president and CEO of Manufacturers Resource Center. They had award presentations. They showed all the kids' videos. And there were councillors there, there were state representatives there. It was absolutely amazing. I think this would be something very good for, I don't think there's anything like this in this area. And there's, from what I understand, it's throughout the state, but there's certain areas that don't have it. And I think this is good because we need people that work in manufacturing and not just going to college and doing business. We need people that can build and make all these products that we use. And this is very eye-opening for the kids. And I think it's a very good thing and something we should look into.
I agree. So we'll take that on.
Okay.
Mr. Labaditsky?
Uh, nothing.
Nothing? Mayor? Any more comments? Well, I need to first say that there will be an executive session that deals with personnel we will not be returning. To all of you who showed up this evening, do have a safe journey, drive, or walk home. And remember, this is Pennsylvania, this happens. Meeting adjourned.